Now we come in a whole another category with the presentation information of people who have gotten on the agenda. So these individuals will be different. They're quite knows that they're going to be here and want to take attention to this stuff. And everybody, Sean and a few other people. But anyway, we have Dave Bell and Alvin Duvall are going to talk about some community concerns. I don't know how you all want to do this, Dave. Do you want to talk to Mr. Duvall or both at the same time?
We haven't talked about who's going to go first or anything. I don't even know what he's going to say. But do you want to go first?
And if you guys, however you all want to have Mr. Duvall go first. If you're up for it, it's fine. However you want to have it, Mr. Duvall. Glad to have you here this evening.
Thank you for allowing me to appear before you. And some of you I know, some I do not. But I came here 48 years ago to work in the financial field. And some baggage that I brought with me was working in the spiritual field. Now, I'm not ordained. I'm just a layperson. And the genesis of why I asked to be here was as to the incident that occurred on the lawn of the school the other day. I've forgotten the date. In fact, I didn't even bother to look up the exact date. But I'm sure you know about it. The, when I heard about it, I was over at church, I think feeding my face, if I'm not mistaken. They had something that day. And I heard some scuttlebutt, if you'll pardon the old military term, going around about an incident that had taken place over at the, at the, at the school. So after, upon leaving, I went over and looked at it. So, and I must admit to you that I did not see the original actions that were taken at the time that took place. I saw the, the second application of the paint job on, on the stone. And it, it did not say what was purported to have been there. And having, having said all that, we all know as adults, I'm 90 years old, and for about 40 years, I've been hearing about God being kicked out of, of schools. Well, somebody got him kicked out onto the yard at least because the, the sign was changed to something else that what some students who had been here had purported to have put on the, on the rock. And so I'm, I'm not asking for any retribution. I'm not even asking to who made the decision. But I think it's incumbent upon whoever made the decision to change what had been put on there, "God bless America," was totally inappropriate and wrong. In fact, at about the time that incident took place, if I'm not mistaken, the United States Supreme Court even made a, a decision that anyone could use the name of God in public meetings, even such as we are here tonight. I hate to say it this way, but some people want to make God a generic term. In fact, when I was still in Huntington, before I came to Lincoln County in 1966, a missionary came back to our church and he brought back some gods from Africa where he'd been. And across the Rostam, he put up a bunch of tin cans, whiskey bottles, beer bottles, all decorated with ribbons and feathers and decorations. And he said, people where he, he had been serving bowed to those things that they had So having said all that, we have been endowed by an Almighty Heavenly Father. Whether you want me to use the term "God" in here tonight or not, I do not know. I haven't used it in my own sense yet. But as I, as I said a second ago, I'm not even asking you to disclose who made that decision that "God bless America" could not be put on that rock by the group that did it. So having said that, I think I've made my point. As we sit here tonight, everyone is going to bow our knee before the Almighty and declare to God that Jesus is His Son. It's bad enough to be kicked out of schools. It's been kicked out of everywhere now. And it is popular to do it. Our nation is in peril now. There's just this one little statement. Our children in the Lincoln County schools ought to be taught the truth. They are not to be taught denominationalism. They are not to be taught many things about individual religions. And to my knowledge, it has never been done. But, as I'm going to use the comparison, the Holy God and all the tin cans and beer bottles and whiskey bottles that the natives in Africa called their god. If the children don't know who the real god is, how in the world are they going to know to make the right decision? I'm glad I came to Lincoln County. It's been a wonderful blessing. My life's been blessed. But I can see in that one act that somebody took upon themselves, whoever it was, to say, "Take that name 'God bless America' off." I served in Central Germany in the World War II. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you for everything that you have listened to. I hope you'll analyze it for yourself. If you think I'm a fool, you think I'm a fool. But I'm expressing something that I think is far greater than anything that man can put together to have a reverence for deity. Thank you.
Anybody have any comments to Mr. Duvall?
I just have a comment. We just stood and said the pledge with our hands on our heart and we mentioned God. And I don't see the difference, but you know.
All I would say, Dave, is we certainly don't think you're a fool. We appreciate you coming. We know where you're coming from. Oftentimes, there may be decisions that the board makes, not just because it's in our hearts, but because we are bound by law or whatever, some actions we have to take. So please understand, Mr. Duvall. We, sometimes you're, you know, you're preaching to the choir, but we, you know, we're glad to have you here. Dave?
Okay. First of all, I'm not here to be argumentative or confrontational. I am passionate about what I...
Come on, Dave. You have been there.
I, I just want to make it very clear where we stand, and I don't represent anybody but myself. That's all Mr. Duvall represents. We don't represent our church. The fellows here are from our church, but we aren't acting on behalf of it at all. Matter of fact, we have played it rather low key, except for my conversations with Steve on the computer that we had back and forth. But, and I'm like Mr. Duvall, I'm not here looking for anybody to blame. But you can correct me if I'm wrong in how all of this ensued, because my information is coming from Youth Works. I was told that Youth Works said, or asked, if they could decorate that rock, that seasonal rock out there, if they could decorate it for Independence Day. They were told yes. They decorated, wrote "Freedom" on one side and "God bless America" on the other. Now someone, I'm assuming the principal or assistant principal, someone looked out the window and saw that and thought, hmm, I don't think we can do that. They in turn called someone here in the office who either later on or at that time consulted some counsel and just told, no, that's separation of church and state. You can't do that. Take that off. So they told Youth Works students to take it off, to paint it. And they painted over it. Now, if I'm wrong about that scenario, that's, now's a good time to correct me on that.
Well, I think you're pretty much on target there.
Okay. All right.
With the fact that when Mrs. Ferguson, the principal, you're right, and she, Ms. Ferguson knows more about this than I, because what we have to, everybody understand here, that that message was on the rock and the message was covered over the rock before the board ever knew it was on the rock.
I understand.
So, you know, because Ms. Smith mentioned it to us here two or three weeks ago. We were, you know, we, I mean, I'd go by the rock every day and I hadn't noticed that. But anyway, Mrs. Ferguson, you are right with the Youth Works here, that's what our students, groups that comes in here and helps in the summer, had asked her to do that and she said yes. But she did not know exactly what they were going to put on there. When she saw it, that just drifts into my case. All right?
Well, I'm just... Yeah. But I, I mean, I understand where you all are coming from. I have, I mean, I understand that.
I just, that's the only...
But here's the issues on this, and I, I'm also a student of, of government as well. That's my passion and, and I want to follow the laws like you all want to. The greatest champion that we have, those of us who believe other than our god, is the laws that are on the books. First Amendment is a law that protects religion and protects people from religion if they don't wish to have it. So I'm all in favor of that, but I, I have a lot, but I'm going to paraphrase this stuff because I've really looked a lot, but there is not one case, not one, where a court has decided in this United States yet that the phrase "God bless America" is unconstitutional and has been court ordered to be removed. Now, there have been superintendents and there have been boards who have voluntarily removed that to avoid lawsuits. They've done that. A famous one out in Oklahoma, Broken Arrow School District in Oklahoma, they had a big time out there on it. All the schools put up on their marquee "God bless America" pertaining that it, and said it was a patriotic saying, which can be argued. But I'm going to argue tonight it's a religious saying, just to make, because that's where I'm coming from. The word "God," as Mr. Duvall said, is, is not prohibited. We said "God, one nation under God." The commerce that you do in the school system has "in God we trust" on the money. The President of the United States takes an oath on a Bible if he chose, chooses to do that, administered by the Chief Justice of the United States, and the last words that are spoken is, "So help me God." State of the Union address, the President says, "God bless the United States of America" or "God bless America," and he walks off. So that is not an, using the word "God" is not a conflict at all. If you use the word "Jehovah," as Christians do, that would be a conflict. Yahweh for the Jews or Allah for Muslims, that's a direct, specific religion and that's a conflict. The word "God" is not. Even probably the court systems, I don't know if they still do it because I haven't been arrested lately, but the court systems used to swear people in on the Bible and say, "So help me God." I know in grievance hearings that we've had here in the past, this Board of Education, as a, as a historical document, has sworn people in, swearing probably, "So help me God." So those things aren't direct confrontations. The case that Mr. Duvall was arguing, or said that Supreme Court argued and handed down a ruling in May was the Township of Greece versus Galloway. I believe it was in Maryland. And they said that the local agency, this was a town council, could open their meeting with the prayer, provided that nobody on a town council led the prayer and that clergy in the community could do it and that they would do it freely for any clergy that wanted to come by and do it and be put on an agenda. Prayer is not prohibited, or saying "God" is not prohibited in government meetings. The First Amendment, as a student of government, the First Amendment has three things involved in it. It forbids the government from establishing a religion like the Church of England. That is strictly prohibited in this country. It prohibits government from favoring one religion over another. And where we all can get into prayer that we would not like, if we would allow so-called prayer in school, and we talk about this all the time, it's great if you're in a Christian community of one denomination, but let the Muslims move into the community and let's have a Muslim prayer. We would object to that. So we cannot favor one religion over another. As a matter of fact, it prohibits the government from unduly preferring religion over non-religion. But the kicker in that too, is it prohibits the government from favoring non-religion over religion. School officials, I, I say school officials, it's government officials, any government agency, you're prohibited, you're supposed to be neutral toward religion. Neutral doesn't mean hostility toward religion. Supreme Court rulings has said that being neutral doesn't mean you ignore religion. It means you protect the religious liberty rights of all students while rejecting school endorsement or promotion of religion. You can't walk around with a ruler and tell kids to keep their head down if we had a prayer in school, like my student teacher did when I was having a student teacher years ago. You can't force students to do that. You can't indoctrinate them. You can't inculcate them. But you can't prohibit them from exercising religion as well. If we start in like we did by banning God, will you now, and I say this rhetorically, will you now ban the, the bands from playing "America the Beautiful," in which it says, "God shed His grace on thee," or the National Anthem, which is the fourth verse in there, the fourth stanza that, that talks about "In Thee, God we trust." That's a slippery slope. No, no courts have said that you cannot have those things going on, but we can't specifically address a religion. Now here is where the stickiness comes in. In the interest of trying to avoid a lawsuit and seeing God on that rock out there in front of that building, great intentions. We don't want to get sued. We don't want to offend anybody. We wound up offending people within the community that you represent who hold God in a special place. Here's the two violations of the First Amendment that took place while you were trying not to offend anyone and violate their First Amendment rights. The Youth Works students wrote that on the rock without any direction from the school principal. They, they did that on their own. They were not told, "Don't write God on that rock." They were told, "Go out and decorate it for the Fourth of July." They did that. When those Youth Works kids wrote that on that rock, that became their free speech, their expression. And when you took that off, when you ordered them to take it off, you violated the free speech, First Amendment rights, freedom of expression for those students. If Mrs. Ferguson had come out and written that on the rock, you would be in violation, perhaps. And I say "perhaps" because nobody's ruled on that phrase. Certainly she came out and wrote "Jesus saves" on that rock, that would be a violation. But the Youth Works, their free speech rights were violated by the Board of Education or by agencies of the Board of Education, trying not to violate the right, First Amendment rights. The second violation occurred when, in essence, by the ruling, you had to take it off. You sided with the non-religious segment. The Constitution says we will not side either with religion against non-religion, but we won't side with non-religion against religion. And that's exactly what you did. And I say you, that's rhetorical or encompasses everyone. As an organization, when you said "take it down," not a religious specific phrase, but a generic phrase, when you said "take it down," you sided with all those people who believe that no reference to God should be made by any government agency. That's a clear violation of the First Amendment. It's two violations in one episode that you did, trying not to violate the First Amendment. Now, saying all of that, what do we want? Fourth of July is over. I'm sure the rock will be repainted for something else. I think it's important that school administrators understand exactly what is involved in this First Amendment, because it is really important. Mr. Duvall and I took an oath many years ago that we would defend the Constitution of the United States. That oath never runs out for us. It lasts our whole lifetime. That's exactly what we're here doing, trying to defend the Constitution. We're trying to defend religious liberty and freedom of speech for all. I saw a violation that occurred one time before out there, this time on the marquee, which was put up by school officials. And it was a, regarding a student who was undergoing some life-threatening surgery. And it was a well-intentioned and tender-hearted message that I liked to see it, but it was still a clear violation of First Amendment because it was put up by school officials on a school sign and it simply said, prayed for, and had the student's name. That becomes a school-directed prayer when you put it in that phrase. That's strictly prohibited by the Constitution. Now, want to see anybody get in any trouble? Go over to that. But here's what I think needs to be done and would give me great satisfaction, is that if during the time when you all do in-service this coming year or whatever, that you contact the American Center for Law and Justice. It's a group out of Virginia. They fight for First Amendment battles all the time, primarily religious battles. Unlike the ACLU that's trying to influence what's going on, this organization fights those battles and they have a history, a track record of cases that they have won and cases that they have lost. They can absolutely give staff members, administrators, staff members, the board, and I would like to see you include all social studies teachers involved in that, they could give them a clear understanding of what's involved in the First Amendment. These are important issues and if we don't get them right, if we lose them now, if we handle them wrong, we're going to lose them. It galled me, quite frankly, to keep driving by that sign out there, that rock and see on one side just "America" and on the other side "Freedom." And I thought, "Freedom? We're celebrating our freedom when we just gave up one of them?" There seems something inherently wrong with that. I wanted to go and paint the word "freedom" off that rock. I didn't think it belonged on there in this situation. So my request to you is that you contact someone who has, this is their goal and their mission, to fight for the First Amendment rights, particularly of religion, and have them do an in-service for all administrators, teachers, and even the board. And that way, these misunderstandings can not occur. I'm sure you all don't like it. We don't like being here, although it's nice seeing you all. But it's passionate for us. I've been awake lots of nights since this has occurred, thinking what, what tack to go, which, which way to go with this. It's too important not to get right, and we just want you to get it right. Thank you.
I'll make comments. And then should you all have any follow-ups, we're certainly be glad. Then board members may have comments. As we've already stated, you've kind of gone through...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
You will have to get up close. Now, that we understand it's an emotional, controversial, complicated issue, and I don't think anybody can doubt any of that, because you, if you said, there are cases that come up every day and I'm sure there are going to be abundance of them in the future. And we, you know, we talked about how to have, I would probably disagree because I think Youth Works, whenever they put something on school board property, it becomes ours. So, but that's the view of them.
If I could just contend with that, you all are gracious enough to allow our church to do an after-school program out there for students.
And that's fine.
We would be, we would be in the same situation. What we say would not be yours. Same with Youth Works, it would not be yours.
The only difference, Dave, is the people who attend that are those that choose to be there and with the sign on our property, it conveys to everybody that it's promoted by the school board, because everybody who drives by there sees it, whether they want to or not, whether what you're seeing, because there are certainly, you know, our schools are used all the time for classes. They can have Bible study classes, as long as those students are the ones that want to be there. The difference is you can't have a captive audience and say, "If I go to the auditorium," like they may have done to us at one time, for different topics. But that's the difference here, I think, is that when that's out there on the school lawn, everybody going by there, the impression they get, that's the, the school system is making this statement and not the Youth Works people. But I digress here. But once again, as you know, being a school principal, the persons that decide what's going to be on a school sign, a school marquee, are those people at the school. It's not the superintendent or the Board of Education, you know, they, we don't go out and mandate and say, "It's what we want you to put on the sign." And as you know, Mrs. Ferguson, the principal, she changes that rock periodically and like you said, I probably expect, welcome back to school here before too long. So what's on that rock is actually a school-related thing. She was not aware of exactly what was going to be put on there, any cause of concern, and I think she followed that up as many people might have done. But then, you know, as I said, and Tor Carol mentioned it one night, I didn't even know that it happened and it was, you know, it had been painted over, so I didn't think much about it until I got your, you sent me a, you and I conversed over the privacy messages on Facebook and you explained your concerns and we, you know, we went back and forth and I agreed with you. And I asked, or I told you I'd look into it. So at that time, I contacted Mr. Mikkiv and I asked him for a legal opinion from our attorneys of whether or not it was appropriate to do that, because that's what I promised, Dave, and I'm not about way I look into it. My way of looking into it was get a legal interpretation. I'm not a lawyer, certainly not a one that delves in that area, not one at all. But anyway, I did that. And so after having done that, Mr. Mikkiv got back with me and our attorney stated that it was not proper, that she thought it may be unconstitutional. I think she uses the word "may" because the case has never come before the U.S. Supreme Court, and until it does, who can say? Let me share something here with you, the basis for what she has done. This is what she addressed to Mr. Mikkiv, but basically she's talking about this issue here. And she refers to the Establishment Clause in the U.S. Constitution. It provides that government, including a school district, may not convey that religion or a particular religious belief is favored or preferred, and I think we would agree with that. But it's coming from the Establishment Clause of the Constitution of the United States. And although the courts have allowed government bodies to refer to religion in different contexts, as we've mentioned here tonight, it has prohibited religious expression that has the effect of endorsing a religious viewpoint or one particular religion. But I think the key here and I had highlighted mine was a religious viewpoint, if I see that word. And she says this has been particularly so in a school setting where students comprise a captive audience. a captive audience. Although each situation must be examined on a case-by-case basis, it would appear that a school's permitting of the posting of religious expressions that express a particular religious viewpoint on a school marquee, a rock, prominently displayed in front of a school would be a prohibition under the Constitution." And then she goes to give us a little explanation of here. "In 1995, the United States Department of Education issued guidelines to help clarify permissive and prohibited religious expression in public schools," which were commonly referred to as the Clinton Guidelines because President Clinton was president at that time. Of course, we've had two others since then, and apparently they have not altered any of these guidelines that have been issued for all schools in the country. But it's basically to allow, or the purpose of it is to allow school districts to avoid contentious disputes by developing a common understanding among students, teachers, parents, and the broader community. That the First Amendment does in fact provide ample room for religious expression by students while at the same time maintaining freedom from government-sponsored religion. And I think you gentlemen both have said that very thing, that there are some times you could do this, but there are other times when you aren't permitted to if you promote one particular religion or something like that. At the same time, schools may not endorse religious activity or doctrine. So she talks about that, and I'm not going to read every bit of it, just the highlights because it comes down to whether there's an endorsement of some religious viewpoint. Is that what the message says to someone? And our attorney thinks when you have that word "God" on a public marquee, that you're expressing some type of religious viewpoint. So then she takes us through, there's a test for this, and Mr. Baker being an attorney, there's all the proper terms, but basically whether a government practice violates the Establishment Clause of the Constitution, there's a test for that. And really what they do with their three criteria. And the first one is the statute, I'm sorry, must have a secular legislative purpose. Does it? Well, our attorney says, "No," she doesn't think so. So she thinks that under that first criteria, we wouldn't have any problem. We would meet that. It doesn't have a particular or secular legislative purpose, so we would meet that first criteria. She calls it prongs. Is that a legal term?
Yes.
Thank you. I knew you'd come in here. Okay. But the second one is where she found difficulty or a problem. Second, its principle or primary effect must have been one that neither advances nor inhibits religion. And then finally, this statute must not foster an excessive government entanglement with religion. And she doesn't feel like number three is a problem, but it's number two because state action that violates the Establishment Clause, if it fails to satisfy any of these prongs. So there's three prongs there. And she feels like one's okay, three's okay, but number two, we would be violating. So her opinion is based upon that. Let's see, I'll go to number two.
Steve, would you repeat that number two, please?
Okay, I'm gonna go into a little bit more depth here, and then I'll answer any questions you have, Alan. But once again, number one, was the secular purpose of an artistic display on the marquee. She has more verbiage here, but she says, "That would likely pass the test and would be okay." But number two, we then turn to the principal effect. Does it suggest government preference for a particular religious view or for religion in general? See, that's, you know, I make my little notes here. Or religion in general. And number two, and her opinion is when you have that word, you use the word "God," you're promoting religion in general, although not maybe the tin can guys and all that, but religion in general. And so that would be the one that she felt would cause us a problem. She says, "Put differently. The effect prong asks whether, irrespective of government's actual purpose, the practice under review in fact conveys a message of endorsement or disapproval of religion." Like you said, you can't do either, but this would be, in her opinion, an endorsement of religion by allowing that, and it would not meet the second prong of the guidelines that were established by the Department of Education.
By those guidelines, you can't have a kid say the pleasure of leavings in the morning because it's got One Nation Under God. So again, you're not going to convince me because I think you're wrong. I think you're pretty wrong. Half the attorneys, when they have a suit, half of them are always losers. Half of them are wrong.
Well, I understand that.
I suggest, again, that I'm not going to convince you and you're not going to convince me, but why don't you get the people in from, who deal with this all the time and have them do the in-service?
Okay. But let me just conclude, okay? Just trying to take where we're coming from.
Okay.
Because if you said earlier, you know, what we have done, once we get a legal opinion, it's very difficult to go, should it ever be questioned, it'd be very difficult for us to go before any legislative body or judicial body and be able to, knowing that your attorney has told you to do this, why didn't you do this? Those are tough things to do when your attorney advises you something and you go in a different direction. Now, if you're an individual, you have the right to do that. It may be you become incarcerated, or the smart one, you got off. But when you're a government entity, you know, we get legal interpretations from our attorneys because that's what we want, you know, that's what they're there for. So now, you talked earlier about you guys took an oath when you went into service, swore to uphold the Constitution of the United States. Every one of us did too. As a matter of fact, about two weeks ago, we were sworn in for this term. And each one of us on the Bible swore that we would uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of West Virginia and the laws that would go with that. So we were right there. So now...
On the Bible?
Yes, absolutely.
That gives an impression of favoring religion.
Well, there was no captive audience. Nobody had to watch us, each one of us. And Mr. Baker did his at his office and no one, you know, but I don't even know how he did his. We did ours with Mrs. Powell because she was a notary, but no one had to see that and no one had to participate. And I guess we wouldn't even have to put our hand on the Bible if we chose not to. But we did because we have feelings, as you do, in many ways. But anyway, it would be, we get legal advice, you know, opposed to, you know, I know you've told me in our conversations online, that you've researched all kinds of cases where you can't, there's nothing prohibiting that on there. But have you ever seen a case where it said you could put it on there? You know, so...
Oh, are you asking me?
Well, yeah. Well, I'm just saying, if we had some, you know, if we were able to go back to our attorney and say, you know, "You've given us justification which appears sound to me, based upon the guidelines and all," and...
All I would know is that the United States government has it upon their currency. God's on their currency. I think that would probably overrule a whole lot of things.
Well, no, if, once again, this is to schools. We would readily agree that schools may be used after school for religious activities, but for those that want to, if they want to have a Bible club at the elementary school out here, and they do, they have a club up there, but it's all, those that wish to be there, they're there voluntarily, their parents and all know about it, and they have that and they use the school. There's no problem with that. Like, that's what I said earlier, this is a complicated issue here, and it's one that would probably be going on for many years to come to clarify it all. But when you, getting back to what I was saying, we get legal advice, you know, we're pretty, you know, we're saying what this, so nobody has shown us that our legal advice is incorrect, and we have to base it on what we've heard. And we take, we were bound, one law, again, we took an oath to uphold the laws and the constitutions of the state and the United States. And if we are told that something is illegal and then we act in a different way, have we violated our oath? And I don't know that, once again, we haven't acted in any manner, and you gentlemen, well, they suggested we have in-service, but no one has, you know, we've never taken any action on this. No one's ever come before us and said, "Put God Bless America back on the rock before the Fourth of July." That never happened.
Did you have a complaint ever about it being on there? Was there ever a complaint filed by anyone?
Not that I'm aware of. Just a question, once again, from the administrator out there, which was legitimate. I got to thinking, you know, when you said that the youth works people, that they were acting independently and they could put that on there. Well, I don't agree with that because it's on board property. But secondly, could they just put a bunch of profanities on there? And because they didn't ask Mrs. Ferguson ahead of time, and they had the right to do it, they could leave those on there. Would we accept that? Or would we say, "No, we're not allowing that on school board property"? So...
I don't think you can equate profanity with God.
What I'm equating is, you said that they could, because it was them as a group, not affiliated with the school system, that they could put that on there and they weren't bound by any laws or things that we may be. All I'm saying, that if it were something that was very offensive to people, then they would be wanting us to make sure it wasn't on there. But anyway.
I just want to add that while you were speaking, you may have seen me looking at my phone. I was reading the legal opinion. I don't have a hard copy of the legal opinion that Mr. Priestley was reading to you from a moment ago. I pulled that up, was reading it on my phone so I could make sure that we correctly conveyed the legal advice that we were given. And I just want to echo what Steve said earlier, that is that I can't speak for the other board members, but I can say that I don't necessarily agree with the message that taking this off sins, but we are legally bound. We are legally bound when we pay a lawyer and ask them to give us advice, which we did in this situation, and they tell us, "This is what you need to do to make sure you don't, well, in effect endanger the budget of your county that provide for your children." We have to follow their advice or risk a lawsuit. Now, what you're saying is we may risk a lawsuit from the other side, but if we routinely seek advice from attorneys and ignore it, it will bring great harm to this board and to the students in the county. I might also add that I missed the last, I believe, the last letter of the group you asked us to bring in for in-service training. My only comment to that would be, if this is a group that promotes religion in schools or promotes religious messages in schools, and we were to bring them in to do in-service training, that would probably also be a violation. The third...
All they would be doing is citing cases that they have won and cases they have lost to give you better guidelines of what ground has been plowed regarding this.
I can verify that because I have followed the American Civil, ACF, Law and Justice Organization for many years, top-notch in constitutional law.
But anyway, I understand, I know, I understand where you all are coming from. You know, from where we stand, we could expect, if we lived in Asheville, North Carolina, or San Francisco, we could expect perhaps a community rebellion, perhaps a challenge, but in Hamlin, West Virginia, without complaint, we surrender. That's kind of where we sit. I know where you all are coming from. We have an unsolvable or unresolvable that are philosophy regarding this, but I don't know. I just didn't think I'd ever see this in Hamlin, West Virginia. And that there's no big community uproar. I'm quite frankly very upset because people aren't upset about it. But you risk, as supportive education, you really risk damaging the goodwill that you try to build with things like this when they occur. Sometimes principals just kind of need to shut their eyes and wait, and two weeks, that thing would have been painted over and the whole thing would have resolved itself. But I don't know. I can just see we're heading down a wrong road.
I must admit that I made a statement, David, the other day, that I'm offended that nobody's offended.
Yeah, that's kind of where I am. But I do appreciate you all. I know where you're coming from. Like I said, you're not going to convince me because I'm setting my position and I know where you all are coming from, from a legal point of view, and you're absolutely right. You have to get the best legal advice you can. I don't know, I'd probably tend to ignore it if I didn't like it, but that would be a risk that I would probably take. But this is Hamlin, West Virginia, a primarily Protestant community where religion and churches, or even people that don't go to churches, they respect the position that religion holds. I don't know, I don't know. There used to be a lot of cases that Boards of Education are supposed to reflect the community in which they serve. And I'm not sure this particular case reflects the community in which you serve. I do appreciate it. I won't take up any more of your time. Thank you.
We understand where all of you are coming from, once again, privately. May feel one way, but I still take care of it. But I never do.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Say, first, is school access too? Say, ten kids come to school and they got T-shirts on that says, "God Bless America." Are you gonna send them home?
Wait there, let... I really, does anybody know, I don't think there's anything wrong with that because, but there may be, I'm going on in my opinion here, someone may have known more than me about it, because that individual, like a student, if he wants to, he or she wants to take their Bible to school and carry it along, they really can do that, you know? They can have meetings during the school day, we're gonna have Bible club during the sixth period, they can do that. So I think it feels that they can do that, but, you know, I'm just, that's off the top of my head. I think they have a right to do it as long as the school isn't making them captive and saying, "You're going to do this."
It's different when an individual's doing it versus when it's perceived as the school expressing a view on a topic. And I mean, that's the clear distinction here.
I understand where all you all coming from. I understood his point of view, your point of view, but I'm just like stupid.
Well, we didn't say that.
We didn't disagree. We just said we followed the law as it was presented to us.
All right. Thank you all. Appreciate it.